All right, six o'clock, I'm gonna go ahead and call this regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Rule call, please.
Zamora.
Here.
Harmon. Butros.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Whitbeck.
Here.
We have a quorum, so we'll move on. Is there any conflict of interest declarations from any of the commissioners?
No.
Seeing none, moving on. No special presentations. Takes us to item five on our agenda, consent calendar. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
So moved.
That was Commissioner Whitbeck.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Butros. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so it moves us to our opening statement. Quasi judicial hearing, so the following would be a quasi judicial hearing which involves the consideration of a land use request such as an annexation, rezone, classification, or approval of a subdivision preliminary plat. The public hearing procedures as required by Idaho law, Idaho code are as follows. Oral and written testimony will be accepted from those who have signed in to speak prior to the hearing being declared open. When providing testimony, please come to the podium and state your name and address, which will be included in the record. Staff will first present a report regarding the application being considered. This will be followed by public testimony. The applicant or the applicant's representative will present a summary of the request for no more than ten minutes. Testimony for those in support will be taken, followed by those in a neutral position, and finally those in opposition to the request. Note, all public testimony will be limited to five minutes or less. The applicant will be offered the opportunity to provide a rebuttal testimony. After the rebuttal testimony is given, the public testimony portion of the public hearing will be closed, and no new oral or written testimony will be allowed. So with that, that moves us on. There's no new, excuse me, there is no old business. It takes us to new business. Action item, open this public hearing, case number ANN twenty-four dash two, PUD twenty-four dash one, and SUB twenty-four dash six. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Staff is requesting a continuance for this case to November thirteenth.
With that, Commissioner, we can, I would entertain a motion for a continuance to date certain end of November thirteenth.
So moved.
That was Commissioner Larson.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Whitbeck. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I think there's value in discussing this case today. The various arguments pro and con may not have been made adequately at the original hearing. There are insights, hopefully, that can be offered. I think it's worth discussing.
Thank you. Other commissioners' thoughts on the motion at hand? Seeing none. Those in favor of continuing until November thirteenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
No.
No. All right, that motion fails. So with that, then we would continue with staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Katie Wright, Associate Planner, 205 South Sixth Avenue. I apologize. Before you today is application ANN twenty-two, or twenty-four oh two, DEV twenty-four oh two, PUD twenty-four oh one, and SUB twenty-four oh six. This was heard before the Planning and Zoning Commission on September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, and did end in a split vote, leaving no recommendation. So we are hearing it again today, October twenty-third. This project location is thirty-seven point six seven acre parcel located on the northwest corner of Moss Street and Lake Avenue. The project site is currently surrounded by a single-family residential to the north, west, and east, with undeveloped land to the south. The application is for the annexation of sixteen point two five acres of land with the initial zoning of R two on parcel shown in, sorry, the parcel not shown in yellow, and the planned unit development will be with a preliminary plat for a subdivision for both parcels outlined in red. And the development agreement and modification is to terminate the Ponderosa Development Agreement that encompasses a portion of this development along with the approved Chestnut Heights and Chestnut Heights South. The westernly parcel was annexed into the city in two thousand and four with the initial zoning of R one as a part of the Ponderosa subdivision, which was three hundred and fifty-one single-family residential lots. The subdivision expired and was later approved for a renewal and time extension, but this application no longer included the parcel that's part of this application. All time extensions and applications for the original Ponderosa sub have since expired. The map on the left is the land that is covered by the development agreement, and the land on the right is the renewed plat that no longer includes this project site. Tonight's request consists of the applicant, applicant's proposal for an annexation of the easternly parcel with a medium-density residential zoning designation and to keep the low-density residential of the western parcel. The purpose of the R one zone is to provide areas by zoning procedures in accordance with the comprehensive plan that preserves and enhances single-family residential neighborhoods as a low-density standard, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Such zones should have a full range of urban services available or projected to be established. The purpose of the R two zone is to provide areas by zoning procedures in accordance with the comprehensive plan that provide medium-density residential development areas at a density consistent with the comprehensive plan. Such zones are primarily located in older neighborhoods and adjacent to shopping, recreational, or cultural facilities. Such zones should be placed in areas that have a full range of urban services available or projected to be established. The proposed development is surrounded by county and low-density residential to the north, medium-density residential to the south, and low-density residential to the east and west. Staff finds the current zoning and the proposed zoning are compatible zoning districts next to low-density and medium-density residential as they match the surrounding zones. The comp plan designation and development is low and medium-density residential and is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan, and the proposed densities are in compliance with the comprehensive plan totaling six point eight seven dwelling units per acre. Between the low and medium-density designations, the project should have a total of roughly eight point five nine dwelling units per acre. The proposed mixed unit development is permitted. The applicant is proposing a development consisting of thirty-seven point six seven acres total. The project consists of a daycare along the frontage of Lake Avenue, a hundred and fifty-one, or forty-nine, a hundred and forty-nine, I apologize, single-family homes, seven duplex lots, and twenty-four fourplexes. This project has one commercial building and a total of two hundred and fifty-nine residential units. The applicant did reduce this by four buildable lots to accommodate some concerns last hearing. The planned unit development code allows for thirty percent of special and non-permitted uses, and the project has twenty-one percent. The proposed development project has been analyzed for compliance with city codes and policies, and staff finds that the development is in compliance with parking, landscaping requirements, all bulk standards for lot size setbacks, furniture and heights, all-size land use design and amenity requirements, and that the site has adequate site access, utilities, and services to serve the site, and is in compliance with all zoning and subdivision ordinances. These are approved developments in the surrounding area. Public agencies were notified and asked to provide comments. The agencies that had concerns were Valley View School District, had concern of future capacity for schools. Pioneer Irrigation originally sent a letter stating this development had outstanding balance, but that has since been paid, and the Idaho Department of Transportation was unable to complete a thorough review as some mitigations fall short of their intersection standards. And we received one public comment written by River Hayman, and this letter was in opposition due to not wanting any more residential development in the area. Due to the application being a planned unit development, this allows the request for flexibility with the city code requirements. The applicant is requesting the following: minimum lot size of twenty-six hundred square feet. I did not correct this to what was changed with the reduction of the four lots in my staff report, so it will still say the twenty-two hundred in the staff report, but that has been increased, and as well as the twenty-six foot lot minimum rather than the twenty-two that was changed in the staff report, and then five-foot interior side setbacks. The following are site-specific conditions from staff. Prior to city council, the applicant shall provide Idaho Transportation Department with proper mitigations that meet ITD standards. Prior to approval of construction drawings, the applicant shall provide adequate bike parking per city code ten oh two oh five, table four, for the multifamily and the commercial uses within the development. At the time of building permit review, all buildings shall meet the height requirements of the underlying zone, twenty-five feet in the R one and thirty-five feet in the R two. The only permitted uses, or use for a lot three, block seven, is a daycare and under no circumstance shall be used for residential. If the applicant proposes another commercial use, it shall be required to comply with the current land use schedule. Approval of this application does not grant approval for any signs or sign locations, and lots two through eight of lot, of block five may be duplex lots. Staff recommends that if the commission recommends approval of the request, that such requests are subject to the conditions as specified in the findings of facts, conclusions of law, and order of decision, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you. At this time, we'll actually have the applicant come up and provide that. They won't ask all of our questions. So Ms. Layton, please come up. Name and address into the record, please.
Good evening, Chairman Zamora and members of the commission. My name is Bonnie Layton with NV five. My address is six ninety South Industry Way, Suite ten, Meridian, Idaho, eight three six four two. Thank you again for your time this evening, and again for staff's time this evening. As you recall, last time we were before you, there were some questions, and hopefully we can answer those and maybe quell some of the concerns that were voiced at that last hearing. So on behalf of Trilogy Development, I'm here tonight to request your recommendation of approval to the city council for Emery Sky. If you could flip to my, thank you very much. This TV screen in front is really a nice luxury, by the way. Last time I was here, it wasn't, it wasn't there. All right, let's see if I've got this working. There we go. I think Katie did a really great job of covering the project, but I'll review my presentation. So as you recall, the future land use map for this area is divided into low-density and medium-density residential. A portion of the project is already annexed into the city as part of a previous project, and the eastern parcel adjacent to Lake Avenue is what we're requesting annexation of as part of this project. We also included a development agreement modification to remove the existing DA that's outdated and does not apply to the parcels. Over time, things have evolved out there. So as you can see, this is adjacent to Lake Avenue. Moss Lane is a main east-west connector that is scheduled to go along our southern boundary, and then we're not far off from Highway fifty-five. To the south of us, there's a project called The Charles, which is a mixed-use development. I think last time there was some discussion about commercial services in this area. The Charles is proposing, I believe it's thirty-three acres of commercial, kind of in the, adjacent to Lake and fifty-five, on the north side of fifty-five. North of that is some additional residential, and then, and then our project south of fifty-five, there's also some residential. Fifty-five is really designated as a commercial corridor in this area, and is appropriate, and is also really close by, not to mention the fact that about two miles to their east, to our east is the boulevard with a lot of services and shops available to our residents. Let's see. There we go. This is a larger picture of where we're located within the city and the context. The city of Nampa is growing westward, and, and then, of course, we are, like I said, adjacent to Lake Avenue and surrounded by city limits and development that's occurring in the area. Here's another vicinity map that's showing some of that. Again, The Charles is to the south of us, but really this is becoming an urbanized area with residential throughout. So as for our acreages, Katie mentioned, we made some modifications to our previous application. And what we did, I went back to our team, and we, specifically, we looked at the cottage lots. So we are able to build the cottage-type product that, that we were showing on those lots. However, we overlooked the fact that those require a three-foot setback instead of a five-foot setback. So in order to build that product that we've built in other markets, we had to widen those lots out, and so that's the impetus for why we went from a twenty-two-foot wide lot in those pink ones, kind of in the center, just south of the Central Park, to a twenty-six-foot wide. That resulted in losing exactly four lots to be able to accommodate that product. It's a narrow lot product that's alley-loaded, has a single-car garage with a concrete pad beside that for parking, so still provides two parking spaces. But again, it's a little bit more of an attainable housing-type living situation. And again, we've centered that in, or we've placed that in the center of our project. Those will be looking onto the green space, so you've, you have that, even though it's a higher density, you've got some openness around that. Again, so our unit counts dropped by four. That adjusted our density just slightly. Our open space really remained the same. Oops, let's see. I'll click quickly to this. So our open space stayed the same. Density went down just a little bit to accommodate that change. I think one of the other issues that came up last time were questions about the park and open space, and is there enough in this area for these residents? We have in the Central Park area over two acres, two, actually, two and a half acres of recreation space with a half basketball court, two pickleball courts. There's a parking lot in there for people to come and gather, so if you have guests and you want to recreate really something that's meant for the residents but also can accommodate visitors to the site. The main plan of this was to really provide that sense of entry into the project. So as you come off of Lake Avenue, as you drive in, you see this beautiful green space, very active space, very community-oriented. As you recall, just on the south there, we have a spot for a daycare, which this commission felt very favorable for at the last hearing. We believe it's a nice element and a nice complement to the project. It's, and for the residents, it's also located adjacent to the park. So not only will they have open space on site, but then there's an opportunity for those kids to recreate in that Central Park. We have a pathway that goes through the park. If I back up, we've got an irrigation easement that runs northwest, north-south through the site. Again, that's developed with a pathway. So a lot of space for recreating, for walking, providing connectivity for all of the residents in the community, as well as folks that may be visiting. As Katie mentioned, we have a mix of product types as well. So we've got fourplexes in the southeast corner and along our southern boundary, some townhomes, the cottage product that I mentioned that we made modifications to, single-family lots as well as, that are narrower, as well as standard single-family, and a few duplex lots that are up in our northeast corner. Oops. So this is an updated plan that you, we submitted to staff. You can see the revisions to the unit counts and how that impacted the site. But really, we feel that we've developed a true, the true intent of a PUD, especially in this situation, and given what's available in the surroundings, you know, a variety of housing types, attainable housing, different price points to appeal to all residents and future residents in the city of Caldwell. These are just some examples of the residential product. Again, just for time, we've submitted these to staff to show what that looks like and the fourplexes, and really, you know, we're, we thank staff again for their time and their help, and appreciate the feedback that we received last hearing. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thanks, Ms. Layton. All right, at this time, I would ask staff, we can ask questions of applicant and also of, or excuse me, commissioners, we can ask questions of the staff and our applicant. Any questions at this time? Commissioner Larson.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. This is not really related to her project, but it was at the bottom. Is farmland included in our comprehensive plan?
Morgan, is that planning, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? I missed one of the words.
Yeah, sorry. Is, is farmland included as a portion of the comprehensive plan? I believe the answer is no, but I wanted to check.
As a use?
As like a part of Caldwell, because we have farmland, we have simlots, a big part of Caldwell.
There is not a place type for agricultural lands in the comprehensive plan. That is correct.
And then for the applicant, you're just gonna have a new traffic impact study based on that adjustment for the size for staff, I think, so they said. That was the only question I had for you. And then after re-reviewing this, I'm leaning towards yes, but I would request that you guys look at a bus stop, just because I feel like the density of Caldwell really needs a bus. I don't know, I used Valley Ride to ride to Boise for five years, and it was fantastic as a student, and so it feels like it's, it would be nice to have it for, a lot of our people work in Nampa, and Boise, a lot of them don't necessarily work in Caldwell. So those are, those are my only concerns. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Chairman Zamora, Commissioner Larson, if I may answer your question. Yes, we are still trying to get feedback from ITD. We think it's a minor issue. It has to do with the intersection of fifty-five and Lake, and our traffic engineer has continued to reach out. I followed up with him again today, and he said that, let me get, let me get to that email real quick here. That he spoke with ITD staff again on Monday, and she said that there have been some staff engineers out sick, and that they were trying to push for a review to be completed next week. So we believe strongly that we'll have any answers that needed for city council, but really, the reduction in the number of units helps our situation slightly. It's not, it's, it's a few units, it's, it's probably pretty negligible. So from that standpoint, again, I think that was maybe a condition of approval to go to city council. As far as the bus stop is concerned, again, we are happy to reach out to Valley Regional Transit and see if this is a location that they are looking, and how we could possibly coordinate with them on that. That's, that's something that, you know, we could follow up with and maybe even try to have an answer before city council.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other questions from commissioners?
Yeah.
Commissioner Butros.
Staff, would you please review what the four required amenities are?
Chair and Commissioner, are you requesting that I list what they have, or what they're proposing, or what is required of them?
No, what they are proposing. I know that the requirement says four amenities, and I was not clear on what those are.
Yeah. It looks like they have some pickleball. I apologize, my plan won't actually pull up. The network won't let me connect. But looks like they have basketball, pickleball, a little like picnic area. And Bonnie, the applicant, should be able to touch on this in a lot more detail at this time. But the commission and council can decide if what they're providing is adequate to meet those four optional amenities. So if it's not on that list, you can certainly suggest or recommend that they add or change.
Ms. Layton, would you like to respond to that?
Um, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Commissioner Butros, yes. So four amenities are required. We have multiple walk, in addition to exceeding the open space requirement for a PUD is ten percent, we are at seventeen percent. So we have quite a robust and additional open, qualifying open space for this project. Qualifying amenities for the project include walking trails throughout the site. We have two different types of sports courts. We also have a, it's hard to read for me without some readers or bifocals, I guess, but we've got the fitness circuit station that's sort of north of the, of the parking area, and then we've got benches and picnic areas in this Central Park. So we do comply with the PUD ordinance in terms of amenities for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a couple more questions.
Go ahead.
I noted that per the zoning for the daycare, it could be used for any other permitted use for that type of zoning. One of my concerns was that the daycare would not, is not really an amenity for the development, because it could be used by anybody in the area. It's not specific to the residents of the development, as you might expect, a pool, or the, the sports courts, or things like that. But if you're meeting the four amenities, and I guess that's a discussion we can have as to whether that's adequate. I did have another question about the increase in lot width from twenty-two feet to twenty-six feet. How many lots are such affected?
There were four lots that were affected, that we lost in that row. Let me get to this plan. So what you'll see is in the row of lots that are just south of the Central Park, we had twenty-two in there on either side of kind of the green space that's in the center. So block four. Sorry, block eight. And I've got my plan set here. So block eight, on the left side of block eight, in the northwest corner, I guess, we lost two there. And then on the other side of the green space in the northwest, northeast corner of block eight, we lost another two lots there. So losing four lots total allowed us to evenly divide that lot width into the rest of the lots to accommodate the fact that we have a five-foot setback here instead of a three-foot setback that we have in other jurisdictions that accommodate this product type. So, so that was an oversight on our part and necessitated the revision.
Yeah, so how many lots increased from twenty-two feet to twenty-six feet?
So there were, so they, they all, let's see, so we have eighteen, we went from twenty, we went from twenty-two lots down to eighteen lots, I believe. And so all eighteen of those increased by two feet.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner, other commissioners' questions?
If I may also just...
You said it, two feet, but it was four feet. It went from twenty-two... It went from 22 to 26.
Yes, yeah, pardon me. And if I may also address the Commissioner Buttros's comments regarding the daycare. So we weren't counting that as an amenity to the site, that's a complimentary use to the site. The PUD ordinance allows us a certain percentage of non-permitted uses. I believe in the staff report, there is a condition of approval that states that the, even though we're asking for this zone and this use, we are limited to that. If we were to try to change the use from a daycare to anything else, we would have to come back before this, before this board.
Mayor and Commissioners, the condition's intent is essentially that it be a daycare. If it's not a daycare, it has to be something that is permitted in the land use schedule or get an SUP, or it's not permitted.
Okay, so that, that sounds...
So it's not, it's not exactly what the applicant was explaining. They, you are able to have a different use. You also could recommend that it be limited to certain uses if that's something you think would be best.
Thank you.
I apologize, I misspoke. We had gone back and forth on that a little bit, so.
Thank you, Katie. I, I don't think I have any other questions.
I, my one question was, well, actually, you clarified it, I just wanted to follow up, was that the daycare was not intended to be an amenity, rather, the, a commercial piece of the project, so.
That is correct.
All right, with that, thank you. We do have, no one signed up in favor nor neutral, but we do have Mr. Allison signed up in opposition who wishes to speak. So, Mr. Allison, you're welcome to come up. You'll have, please state your name and address into the record, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name's Craig Allison. I live at 16771 Abram Avenue, Caldwell, Idaho. I live at Windsor Creek, right across the street from this. Start with, I do want to say one, one props for the development. If they're worried about ITD and Highway 55, their intersection at Lake, there shouldn't be a worry. The contract already has gone, already gone out to widen that road. And any development to the south of that is in Napa's 20-year plan. So if we're worried about that intersection being approved, well, it's never going to be approved for anything else, so that should be fine. My only concern, and my few concerns I do have with this development is not the development as a whole. I really appreciate it, it looks beautiful, it looks like that. I do believe that there are some shortcomings that the staff did not give, give to you. A few things like Lake Avenue, if you go down to Lake, so if everybody comes down, Lake Avenue gets to Boulevard, there's no stoplight. So you'll spend a good 10 minutes at that intersection trying to turn a left at the height of the business day. So how's that going to work with the subdivision there, and somebody wants to come down to go to Albertson's or come down to here? And then you add that on top of, of Napa adding all their houses in, in the future. How's that going to work? So we have a problem there. We do have a problem that, at Homedale, on the intersection of Lake and Homedale, how's that going to work out? I do not think it's their job to fix that intersection on, because in the future, we're going to have more something. But what's the plan for that? If there's no plan, then we're going to have a huge problem. I don't know how they came up with the numbers with how many vehicles a day that comes on that intersection, but I have not seen a road counter there in years. So, and I drive it every single day. So I don't know how they come up with that number. I do also have a problem with no left turns or right, light turn lanes, you know, coming into their, in place. I do understand Moss, they have right turns and left turn lanes for Moss Lane for there, but have the other entrances. It is not that much money for them to actually have a right turn lane or a left turn lane put in. It's just a few feet. It's 12 feet of land, you know, they just have to carve out for a right turn lane, maybe a little more for the left turn lane. But let's think about it. If they're burning all, if they're going to be adding houses to the south of Highway 55, it's going to, sooner or later, it's going to be stopping traffic and doing stuff. That will be our bill at that time. This is, they're billing it and stuff like that, they can put the cost onto that people are billing the houses. Sooner or later, it will become our cost. So why don't we just do it now? It should be for every subdivision that's being built, should have those things built into it instead of us having our money be doing for it. Also, what's the plan for the place on Lake Avenue that don't have lights, that won't have lights and don't have sidewalks? From Homedale to, all the way down to Eustick, it's not striped. All they have is the center line that's dashed. It's so tight there, and there's no sidewalks. What's the plan for that? I get we don't have a lot of money, but the city of Caldwell's got over $25 million from revenue share from the state in the last four years. Plus, they've gotten more money from the sales tax after ITD gets their $80 million. They've got more money for that. So what's the plan for that happening? I get we don't have money where we can actually put subdivisions and have them put the sidewalks in, but where, what do we do about that? You know, like I said, I don't have a problem with that thing. It's a beautiful thing. It just, these are a few things that we can have them taking a little extra time, put some more money into it, and then we don't have to pay the taxes later to fix it, because it'll be a lot more expensive to fix it. We'll have to buy the land from them. That's inflation. You know, the inflation costs on construction will be more costly. And how about a bike lane? I just drive from back from, from Caldwell and got gas at Costco. They have bike lanes up 10-mile. Why not bike lane? Start a bike lane. We just don't have to be here, it could be there. Like I said, I don't ask, want them to have to go all the way down the road, just start it on theirs, and then when we go down, put another two, three feet down on the other, other subdivision. That's all we need. It's just a little, little help before us have to spend our money. With that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Allison?
Well, the, the, the response on the traffic improvements, really, Rob is the expert. I, I don't know if you have time or want to make a response with regard to the intersections of Lake and the Boulevard and Lake and Homedale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. I can respond to a few of those things, and I apologize, you, you kind of rattled through a lot of things, and so there's a couple of things that I can remember, at least. Lake and the Boulevard is slated for a traffic light. There was actually a development on the north side that was preparing to build a traffic light, and then that development went cold. And so it kind of left us in limbo because we had a plan to get a traffic light in there. We still have, some of the right-of-way was already dedicated for that, and so we still have a plan for that. That'll probably happen soon. Some of the intersections on Homedale Road are deficient. They've been converted to four-way stops for safety reasons, but there are still delays that we're not happy with. And so we have had, over the last couple of years, a consultant review all of those intersections, and we're starting to get those into our plan and make sure those get rebuilt so that we have better, safer and better, less time delay on, on the Homedale Road corridor. A lot of those improvements are being paid for by development, such as this one. This development, when they come in, they have to do all their frontage improvements, which is a benefit to the city. And typically, as development comes in, they build the road out. The, the road gets built out as development comes in, and that's what pays for the road to get built. And so this development doing all of their frontage is a big piece of that. All of our new road sections have bike lanes striped in. It's the old roads that don't, the old farm roads. And so as, as they develop out, there will be bike lanes included in all of those. And I think the last thing that, that I'd mention right now is that the city is preparing to adopt traffic impact fees, and that's going to, that's going to help the city quite a bit on some of these corridors, getting improvements done on corridors that have been identified in our capital improvement plan as deficient or that will be deficient over the next 20 years because of development. And then those impact fees are all paid for by new development so that it's not coming back onto the taxpayers that have already lived in the city. Those impact fees would be put toward these improvements that these new developments are, that these new developments are causing through their trip generation from their development. So that's, that's a lot of information in a nutshell, and I can explain more after the meeting if you'd like on, on some of these specific things. Karcher is going to be getting a new intersection at Lake.
Yep.
That's all going to be widened out. The entire Karcher corridor is going to be widened out, and so it's going to be able to convey a lot more east-west traffic that should help the whole area.
Thank you.
Yeah, my biggest concern was the fact that if you go across the street, just to start the street lane, you actually had a subdivision that doesn't have those turn, turn lanes in. So I, I'm seeing that, you know, that the entrances aren't having covered. So that's why I was making that concern, is because that's what I'm actually seeing.
Thank you. All right. All right, this time, nobody else has signed up, so Ms. Layton, you have an opportunity to come up and provide a rebuttal.
Thank you, Chairman Zamora, and members of the commission. Again, we really appreciate your time in hearing this application. We're really excited about this development. We think that it brings a lot of housing choices to the area. It's very complimentary to the surrounding development that is existing and that will be coming in. And with the commercial that will be coming in with the Charles along 55, I've recently heard that they are making progress in, in that regard as well with that development. So we believe this is really the right time and the right place for this project. We appreciate your time, and we request your approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any final comments before we close public testimony? See, now I would entertain a motion to close public testimony.
So moved.
Commissioner Larson?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Buttros. All those in favor?
Aye.
No one opposes? All right, so now it's time for us to dialogue.
Chair, the, this, so I said no last time. I'm leaning towards yes this time. The answer is, and this is something that I'm wanting staff to try and help us out with next time, is the density of the ones to the houses to the east of the approximate same size, when I went and counted them, is about 170 homes. They're building a little less than 170 homes here. So although it says low density, I really feel like the PUD portion makes everything impossible to understand because a PUD with R3 can have 60 homes per dwelling unit, and a PUD with an R1 can technically be six, and a PUD with an R2 can technically be 12, and they're normally three, four, or up to 25. So to say all of that, I think that the, the surrounding reason matches similar density. I don't like the density of six, but it is, it is an overall project, it looks great. I just would like it to be a little less, but it matches the surrounding reason. So that's the reason I'm leaning towards yes today, is because the east portion of the approximate same size is the approximate same density, even though the zoning is, in my opinion, a little misleading. So that's, that's, and then my only thing is the bus portion, which I don't think needs to be added as part of the approval, but a strong recommendation to add a bus. And so those are, that's my only, that's my opinion at this point.
Thank you. I, I'll just add to that, I was in favor this last time and in favor of this, this time. I appreciate the, the changes from a previous hearing to now. I, I recognize and appreciate the comment from Commissioner Buttros in regards to the amenities. I think these are great amenities that are here in addition to, although we qualify it as one of the four or not, the additional 10 acre, or 10% of additional open space is quite great, particularly if you look at a lot of those communities on the area where there's limited open space. I think this provides something that's unique. And I still stand by my statements from before about the need for a daycare, and I, so I think that this is a super sound commercial opportunity for a community. We talk about the density, so that means there's people, there's, there's families, there's a need for this daycare. So for the, this, these daycare caregivers, and so I think that provides a great resource. I appreciate the comments from Mr. Allison in regards to the, to the roads, and I additionally appreciate Mr. McDonald's comments and just saying, like, the city's working on a plan to address those. And so with that, because of all that information, I still stand in support of this. Other comments?
I voted in favor the first time, and basically just needed to hear any objection to why there would be no vote now. I would still vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So I voted against it last time. It was not clear to me what the amenities were for the drastic reduction in lot size from what was an R2 requested, excuse me, what was an R1 requested to be R2 with a PUD, and going from a lot size, the minimum of 8,000, and now I understand it's a minimum of 2,600 square feet per lot. I also had a little bit of heartache with the designation of the daycare. As an area changes, you know that neighborhoods get older. It could be that a daycare won't always be the right solution. And what I've heard tonight is that there are other allowable uses for that. It doesn't, it, it may start out as a daycare, but it doesn't have to stay as a daycare, and that gives the community flexibility. So getting more detail on the amenities and talking about the increase from 10% open space to 17% open space, I think that this is something now I can support.
Okay. Any other discussion for commissioners?
Sorry, I just want to reiterate, the main reason I'm leaning towards yes is because of the counting of the density on the right side. So if staff can in the future just help us give rough density per dwelling unit per acre, I would have probably said yes in last time, because the density is about the same, even though the dwelling, even though the zoning is different. The density is really what matters. The zoning is kind of inconsequential for stuff that already exists, so.
Thank you.
So just to get that point, what was offered was if the commission wanted to create a condition that it could only be a daycare, and I would recommend that we not impose such a condition.
I agree. Other discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion at this time. I'll go ahead and make a motion based on the testimony and evidence in the record in this matter and upon finding of the, finding of facts and conclusions of law set forth, set forth herein, do hereby determine and move as follows. The request for annexation for parcel R3273101000 with the zoning designation of R2 medium-density residential, a development agreement modification to terminate the existing development agreement for Ponderosa subdivision and a preliminary plat and plan unit development approvals for parcel R3273101000 and R3273101100 for the Emery Sky PUD subdivision is recommended for approval, subject to the conditions of approval as presented. Sir, second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Whitbeck. Roll call, please.
Zamora?
Yes.
Whitbeck?
Yes.
Harmon, Larson?
Yes.
Buttros?
Yes.
All right, and with that, we'll close this public hearing and move on to our next item on the agenda, which is adjournment. So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Commissioner Larson, sir, second? Second, Commissioner Whitbeck. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And oppose? All right.